Move the minutes?
Yes, move the minutes. Have you read the minutes?
I have, and I seconded motion.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How easy was that? They were very good. They were very good. It makes you want to keep your minutes because she refers to date and time for the minutes.
Oh, am I gonna need that in court some day here?
You may. It's a, it's a, it's a good, I like that very much. Okay, do...
Well, the size of those manifest, they're all payable and that stuff all the way.
I didn't hurt anybody, it's just that...
Swing at that, swing at that steel, that cast iron spry ban, you know?
It's from swing and steel years ago when I worked in the shop.
Yep.
But, uh, when my hand shakes and the doctor's gonna wear one of these for a while.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a manifest in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Wow.
And second. That's what I figured it was in there. I hoped it was in there anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, once this covers for a month or...
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And I have a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars eighty cents.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
We've got a rate package for the health-
That, that's the rate package for the healthcare plan.
Okay.
Um, it was a raise of fifteen point six percent this year.
Yeah.
And, uh, but you have to sign it to make it official down there.
We don't have to make a motion, do we?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
So there's only one place for a signature?
There's only one signature on that, yeah.
Yep. I've just got my name on it. Do you guys want all the rest?
Put all the responsible-
Right on your shoulders.
She did it.
Yeah, we had gone out last year and solicited other bids and we came back with a thousand dollars for the total plan. Um, and just figured there is not worth it to switch every couple of years if we, if it wasn't a big jump, so.
And then we have a yield tax levy map, two fifty-seven lot three.
Two fifty-seven lot three.
Seven, seven year tax.
Oh, gotta have fun with that one, huh?
Does that mean we're gonna have to have a rebal again?
Yeah, proportionally under assessed.
Is that the H D C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Assessment data, yeah. Yeah, so with the way the market is, um, and we finished our, our rebal and within a year where our numbers aren't at a hundred, a hundred percent anymore. Just because of the cost of housing keeps going.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So is this something we're gonna do every year then?
No, we can't do it every year. We typically do it every, every five years.
Yeah.
Unless it's a huge market swing or something like that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's, uh... I think as long as they're not below eighty percent valuation, then we're good.
Back in the day, I can remember we were at thirty percent once the state finally came in and said.
Yeah, yeah.
We have slam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's ama- it's amazing, but you figure out, you know, a housing and, and, and we don't have-
Well, the market fluctuates and you have to take into consideration, but you have to give it a chance to catch up too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why you try and do it every five years.
I'm ready.
Um, I have a couple of things that won't take long.
Okay.
The, at the school board meeting, they wanted to know about getting together again before the end of the year with the budget. I didn't know if you wanted to invite the Canterbury or even the Belmont board members to the next, to the meeting on December twelfth with, uh, I mean, December fourth with the budget committee. Um, if you think that might be a good idea. That way they could see how we go through the budget with the budget committee.
Do they do that type, type of thing up there or?
Well, I don't know, but they, and they may, and they may have some insight onto their budget too at that time.
Yeah.
You know, the only big thing that they talked about was the transportation.
Yep.
Cost increase, but, um, I don't know if you wanna just have me reach out to the, at least the ones in Canterbury and say, you know, our, we're meeting with the budget committee on the fourth of December. If you're interested in sitting in and, or watching online or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, at least they would have some insight into our budget process from our budget committee.
Would you think the, um, where, where do you think is big enough to potentially hold all of us?
Uh, pretty here.
You think so?
Yeah, our budget committee usually comes in and sits here and, and they could just sit, you know, against the back wall or whatever and if they had some information, they could provide it at that time.
Yep, yep, okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, so too, okay, yeah.
Sounds good, I do.
Alright. Um, just update you on the solar panel repairs. The library, we had an inverter that was not producing as much energy. Um, Jim Snyder came with Fred Fortnoy, an electrician, and they found some wiring issues. Um, it was between the, the panels themselves, so, uh, he figured probably less than five hundred dollars would fix it. So I told him, go ahead. So they'll be coming by at some point to, to do that.
That's good news.
Um, he did also say that, uh, one of the inverters, um, they were having some problems with it. He said it may need to replace, be replaced in the future. Um, it's fifteen years old now, something like that, and it would be about twelve hundred dollars for the inverter and then installation fees. Uh, but he said, keep track of it. I'll keep sending the numbers along and so, um, they'll keep track of it that way.
They talk about the wonkiness of the panels at all or?
Yeah, I, he did not say anything about that. I don't know whether they just, the windows moved them or whatever, or I don't know.
I think he moved them like a year ago. It's been quite a while.
Yeah.
I tried twisting them.
Yeah.
They didn't move.
I-
They just kinda looked funky being like-
Yeah, some of them were, yeah, not all in the same direction, so I don't know. I'll talk to them about that. I'll make a note and talk to them about that. Um... Uh, let's see. Um, I think in the paperwork you have is the class six road inspection provided by the road agent.
Yep.
He goes out twice a year and inspects the roads and if there's something that he feels, um, is part of the road waivers that are in place that need, need work, then he contacts the, uh, the road waiver, uh, people and-
Yep.
The people that have the road waivers and asks them to do some things, so. Uh, the only one you'll see down on Old Gilmanton Road, um, new driveway added with a question mark. Uh, apparently one of the lots on, uh... It's in Sherwood Forest, the road that goes down. Um, they own the lot between Old Gilmanton and whatever road that is. Apparently they decided to put a driveway and it'll come to those parts that care for there, so. He's gonna send them a note, uh, saying that they need to get a driveway permit.
Yeah.
So on and so forth, so. That was the only thing that came up during the inspection. Uh, let's see, what else? Um, the bag at the transfer station, uh, we have about thirty-six hundred dollars left in the budget for that. Um, we have bags enough to get us through until the end of February, maybe the first of March. Um, but Mary and I, Mary and I have been talking with the company we get the bags from and the price is gonna go up next year probably, November twenty-four. So we're thinking about spend, spending that thirty-six hundred dollars on small bags. That'll buy us a, I don't know, there's a minimum amount of bags we have to buy and that'll buy us that, that amount, um, so.
How long do you think that'll last this?
Uh, I think if we buy those, couple of the ones we have in stock, that'll get us almost to the end of next year.
Hmm?
Well, yeah, sounds good.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yeah, some years we don't buy any, some years we have to buy twice, so.
What do people buy the most of on those?
Same, same for both large as well. I always thought that we sold more large, but, uh, we don't sell. It's about the same.
We got plenty of them or?
The large ones, uh, we have enough to get us through until March or, or right around the end of February, first of March, so probably after the, the first of the year, we'll, we'll place an order, so. Okay, so that's okay on that. Um, what else? Kevin, do you know is, is, uh, Jeff or anybody else coming or?
I thought your lead's Jeff was.
Okay, alright.
Give him a few minutes, otherwise I can hold tight on.
Quick update, the roof at the library has been fixed. There was a leak and the roof was fixed. And also the one at the, um, safety complex.
The chief's, uh-
The chief's, there's no water leaking, leaking on the chief's desk anymore.
He's much happier.
Yes, yes.
Don't mind my background memory.
He says now, I, he says now I'm thinking, I'm gonna give it a couple, about a month, he says, then I'm gonna buy some new ceiling tiles.
There you go.
Um, so that check was in the accounts payable. It was thirty-six hundred bucks for both the repairs. Uh, the one at the library is a little more extensive than the one at the safety complex.
What's up to your membrane?
The library was where the shingles meet the flat roof.
Oh, yeah.
And he ended up peeling back some shingles and doing some work in there and flashing and stuff. And on the safety complex, it was where one of the, the flat wall comes down and meets the roof. So it was at that transition, but, um, the flashing, um, apparently was never installed correctly. So he pulled the wall off, put flashing up the wall and then got it, got it, got it set up, so. He sent me a whole bunch of pictures and I forward those to the buyer, so.
Good.
Um, while we're on that, Jeff, while you're here, the same contractor, Jeff had asked about the, uh, uh, Elkins Museum, the brickwork.
Yep.
Um, there's one of the windows needs to be replaced and we have a resident here in town who's gonna repair the window or build a new one. And, uh, apparently he's very reasonable rate. Jeff is gonna do a little work on another one. And then the brick needs some work and so I'm talking to that contractor about that. He asked, how far do you wanna go? Is it just one side of the building or the whole thing or? I said, I said, I said, I'm pretty sure whatever you think, whatever the mason thinks needs done. Um, so I was gonna, I just wanted to confirm with you.
And, and, and honestly, my answer would be if we need to do it in phases or stages, that's fine.
Yeah.
But, but, um, just so you know, the window, the storm window was taken off today and delivered to the shop, so that's underway. That work is being done. Um, I, I'm going to do the two smaller side storm windows on this side and then the three on the, uh, Kimball Pond side. Um, at no cost of the time. I'm just gonna do them and, and paint them. Uh, but I, I've gotta get the, I need a little warmer weather, so I'm gonna do it in the spring and get that done.
Yeah.
Um, and then I, I think that the, Ken, the issue with the, with the, um, um, the, the pointing, did he look at the, the steps in the, in the concrete?
Yeah, he hadn't gone there yet. He was just, just kinda a general question, how much do you wanna do and?
I, I, I would like someone that knew what they were looking at and knowing what to do, to just look at the steps and the two pieces of grant, of concrete on the side of the steps. They're broken, they're cracked, and I don't know whether water is gonna start seeping into the cellar or whatever, but, but I just, somebody that knows what they're doing's gotta look at it and just say, how do we stabilize that? And, and I would do that before I went about the pointing.
Okay, alright.
Just a suggestion.
Alright.
Were those not done some, not too long ago or?
Which?
The library pointing.
I don't believe so.
Ted did some work on them, on the chimney, I think. I think Ted did some work on the chimney and that was, that was what he did.
But, but not the, not the sides.
Not the sides.
Not the exterior frame, if you will.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's, there's some deterioration, but, but I do think it's the kind of thing that we could phase, you know, do a side a year or something like that, something reasonable.
Yep, alright.
As long as we keep the phases going.
Yeah.
Let's get it done.
Exactly, get it done, you know, but in four years, you do all four sides.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Alright. Alright, I think we're ready for the H D C. They're here to discuss the proposals. And I have that whole package here in case you guys wanna look at it.
I'll explain the schedule.
Yeah, good, good, yeah.
Okay. So, my last, yeah. Um, we've met as the H D C, um, since the meeting that we had here with the director. And we've got a proposal to take two of the items to put onto the warrant, um, for next year. And, um, look at the rest of them over the course of time, just so that it's not like a huge, you know, how that goes when you try to present too much warrant article at all gets voted down.
Well, if, if people get confused, the proposal.
Yep, no.
So I'm gonna let Jeff, um, go over those two items and take any questions if there are.
I, I just, you know, we were disappointed with the town attorney's position, but certainly understand why you ended up where you are. I mean, it's perfect sense and why look at liability. And as Kevin mentioned, we wanted to, you know, as we stepped back from our, you know, full-blown proposal and looked at it, we thought, okay, let's do this incrementally. Let's do two this year and maybe next year we'll do two and so forth. And so the two proposed amendments that we have for this year, we would like, and we'd like your endorsement. I mean, if the selectmen aren't gonna support it, you know, we're not gonna waste their time. Uh, so, so my, our proposal would be that, that if you are generally, uh, consistent with the concept that we're, the two items we're talking about, we'll draft it, bring it back to you so you can review it to make sure that you're absolutely on board with it. And then if you are, then those will, those will be the warrant articles that we submit to the town. The two items are as follows. The first is, um, for the, rather than the legal description, which is included in the ordinance, as to where the districts are, that we simply reference the zoning map, the town's official zoning map, so that the map will serve as the vehicle. People read these and they don't understand where the boundaries are. If they could look at a map and see the boundaries, then they would be sure that things would be, you know, fine. They know where the boundaries are.
Do they, does it need to come onto the warrant article as a, as a drawing or as a description or?
I would think that it might come on, I would reference the, the wording, the wording that says, and I can give you the wording, that the location of the center historic district and the Shaker historic overlay district are described in the ordinance, um, uh, as... Yeah, that, that wording's gotta change, but are, are designated on the zoning map of the town of Canterbury. Something very simple that just tells you exactly what it is. And then, Ken, if you think there needs to be a copy of a map, we can include a copy of a map, but-
Yeah, I, I just, I've never seen anything like that. I'm not sure how you describe it to us or?
Well, I, I think, I think it is, the reference is to the official zoning map of the town. And so as long as you've got that as the criteria, then people should understand it. Again, I think that simpler the language, the better, so that everybody understands it. And then the second change that we would propose is there, under the current stat, under the current ordinance, under thirteen, I think, uh, I wrote it down, so I can play you that. Under thirteen five A, it requires that every application require a hearing. And there are, quite honestly, situations that shouldn't require a hearing and shouldn't require people filing a, you know, a, a filing fee. Um, what, what we should have is language, and, and this language, we've got, um, the historic district commission shall conduct a public hearing on all applications. And, and that's the current language. And what we're asking for is there should be a waiver provision, so that if the selectman, the select board's member and the chairman of the H D C could, could jointly decide this does not affect, and here's the wording, um, is all of the, before granting a waiver, the application will, with all required information and filing fee will be eliminated, must be received for completeness. The granting of waiver does not relieve the applicant from meeting all of the provisions of the regulations, but exempts the applicant from payment of a filing fee and a butter notifications. And it's, it may be a nominal administrative fee for just processing the application. But, but there is no impact, uh, to any of butter. There's no impact, there's not visible from any public way. Um, and it's contrary, and it's not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. And again, the two ideas here just make it as simple as you can, and, and frankly, that's just the public good. You know, we're not, if, if, why cause people to jump through who's they don't need to jump through?
Yeah.
You know?
But, I mean- To have a process where at least there's, you're still doing all the work. You're still making somebody fill out an application so you know what their intent is, so that you can hold them to something, should they go off on a different tangent, right? And you still have the ability to go back and check it when it's done and make sure it would be worthy of approval. But what we're doing is saying, you know, there've been instances, years and years, where somebody says, at the store, they pull aside a member and go, do you think that this requires going for it? And some people go, why, no, don't worry about that. And then you find out somebody else comes in and says, well, how come so-and-so got to do, just trying to make a brought, a procedure? And we figured if, if it's the chairperson and the board select rep that signed this waiver and, and it's recorded, again, you know, with the appropriate, whether it's a building permit or whatever, it's there to go back for checking on and then holding people accountable.
They did what they said they're not doing.
Yeah.
That's okay. And so there's a record, the, the town has a record.
When you don't have that need, it's not visible to the public view and it's not visible to the butter. Why are we gonna charge somebody a hundred dollars to do something that, you know, if, if we're uncomfortable with it and you think, oh, the H D C should, good, we have that right.
When in doubt, have a, have a hearing. But, but if you don't need it, why put everybody through all of that? And then it can get expensive and some people may not have the resources.
That's true.
So, you know, it's just, um, so those are the two changes. I, I would mention to you that there was a whole discussion with the town attorney about qualifications. That language should just be amended to say may, and it's discretionary with the select board. It isn't, you know, this shall was, it might error. It just should be may, and then you can decide what criteria you're going to use to appoint an H D C member. And, and that's really what we're, that's our increment for this year. And, and everything else, you know, that, that was identified by town council, we're not gonna do it. We're just simply gonna wait and do this over time.
I think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
There is-
Less, less confusion.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
There's one issue and we're working with, um, Mike Carter, and that is the current map has an issue with the, the legend. I just looked at this map, which is from nineteen ninety-nine, and it actually is correct that it shows both in the Shaker Village, um, museum preservation district is this yellow with the hash marks. And the overlay district, which is what we're more concerned of, includes the non-hashed yellow marks, okay?
I'll just come up and take a look.
The problem is the current map that's out there only shows the overlay district, but has it labeled as a museum preservation district. So the preservation district has its own set of guidelines because of the conservation easements and, um, historic easements. But the overlay district is confusing if somebody was to look at the current map because you, you can't find the overlay district, even though you're staring at it. So we're gonna have the map itself corrected, and that's probably correcting the legend. Um, and/or they should have two different colors or something other than hash and hash because-
Those come up before.
Yeah, yeah. But the current map doesn't show an overlay district and a preservation, it only shows preservation. So we'll have to fix that.
Yeah, there's no other disagreements that you're aware of, okay?
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, yeah.
Absolutely, no.
And, and, and we're trying to be really precise about it.
Yeah.
And, and again, the more clarity there is, the easier it is for everybody to understand.
Yep.
And that was our goal.
Yes.
You know, from beginning to end.
Yeah.
I promised Ken that it would not take five minutes and I think we're just about to stop.
I'm a man of your word.
There it is, miss.
So, so we're in agreement that they can bring it forward?
Yeah, I think that's-
Yes, I, absolutely, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya. Yes.
Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks for building the windows, Jeff.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
There you go.
Um, the next thing on the agenda is the proposal for purchase of property. We had a second proposal on that same piece of land, so I think I'll give that to you. So the paper on top is the second proposal and the paperwork in the file is the first proposal along with the copy file.
It's the second proposal and this is the one-
Yeah, and I'll leave the letter there for the first proposal is there.
And this is the-
This Donald Perry's the guy out on, uh-
One that we-
Gilmington Road, right?
Right.
Uh, I don't know if that's where he lives, but he lives out there.
I thought he was the one that's gonna work on the post office.
He is, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's right out. He's, um, let's see, he's over here, I think. He's the one that gave away pieces of land to make everybody whole out there. Every have like seventeen acres.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, does he about this piece?
He does.
Yeah.
They both do, right, or not? They both do, right, or not?
Yes, they both do.
Is he the one that bought?
He lives, he.
The big piece?
His house is on, I believe is on Old Gilmington Road. He lives on, yeah, he lives, actually lives on Old Gilmington Road. But he has property on, uh, Shore Forest Drive to.
So the, the one that.
Yeah, he has.
Florence Hawkins, so. That was a good sized piece.
Yeah, he has almost seventeen acres out there. It goes, abuts New Pond and then comes back in and, um, abuts that piece of property that's available right there. So this is one of the quarter acre lots then, right?
Yeah.
What's the lot number on it again?
It is lot number two one oh one oh three six.
Yes, point seven one.
Yeah.
Okay, curse.
Yeah.
So I know it's different out there, so that the Pelkey bid proposes to combine lots, thirty-six, thirty-seven, to make one building lot.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
So typically, typically what happens is, though, all those lots are, are grandfathered. If somebody bought a single lot from a private sale, they could build on it, as long as they had setbacks and a second approval.
Okay.
What happens is, what has happened previously is the board of selectmen have agreed to sell town or lots in there with contingent that the either lot gets merged.
Yeah.
Or there's no additional residential building.
Yeah.
If the, if the lot that's already existing has a house on it, and they wanna merge it with this vacant lot, then there's a contingency put in the deed that says they can't add additional residential dwellings.
Yeah.
The selectmen have said, you know, you can add a shed or a garage or something like that, but no additional residential dwellings.
Yeah.
And in some cases, they, they've said you have to merge the lot. Some cases, they've said, no, you can keep the second if you want, or you could merge them. In some cases, they've said, well, you have to merge.
Yeah, and we've done a couple on planning board during my time there, at least a couple, maybe more. So what are our obligations? We've got one dated October fourth, one dated October thirtieth.
Yep, so, uh, in the past, we have, the only advertisement we've done for this is through the website or through the posting of the agenda. So like we try to advertise lots for sale if it's a butter. Typically, the selectmen won't get the, the butter and determine whether they're, that's what they wanna do, or they wanna sell the lot. So, um, you're under no obligation to notify either of the bidders. Other than if you decide to sell it to one or the other, then we notify the, the other person, and we notify them.
So I'm just wondering, do we wanna make this more private or not private? But give both parties an equal chance to buy this thing at a certain date? As opposed to just, I mean, we would have acted on that one the other day, the first one, right? If we'd have met before this, maybe.
And you might have sold it then.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, do we wanna make these like a sealed bid where they come in and we will vote on them on a certain day or?
It's up to you guys what you do.
I'm just trying to think what the fairer way is. I, I hate to think if I was living in that situation, a lot disappeared one day, it's like, oh, I didn't know about that. I don't know if making a sealed bid though makes it, something has to be disclosed to the folks in the area or? I would make this too complicated.
Yeah, we, we have, the town has never, again, advertised lots for sale up there. Typically, in a butter, will come to the town and say, hey, I know this is a town or lot next to mine, can I, can I buy it? And the town says, you know, well, you know, this is what the property is worth according to our records, and this is what we've been getting from these vacant lots up there, and they do it that way.
Yeah, that actually leads to my next question, which is what is the law for?
Um, the tax cards right there show what, what's the assessed value or, or evaluation of it.
It looks like thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Yep. So that's, that's the taxable value that we have signed to it. We have been selling lots up there between five and six thousand dollars, um, just to get them on, back on the tax rolls. And the town in the past has not, does not want own property up there as much as possible, so, the selectmen, previous boards of selectmen have felt that was a reasonable amount of money that gets it back on the tax rolls, and it's not a, not a large cost to the property owner and plus it, it prevents additional housing up there. So, because the owner could decide to sell it to somebody and they just built a house on it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why the selectmen have, have been, you know.
What?
Does, when it, so when it goes back on the assessed roll again, does it go back on at the thirty-eight or thirty-nine or?
Well, it'll, yeah, it'll go back on for the assessed value. And then if they decide to build something on it, maybe it will go out and assess it, reassess it, and figure out what they're gonna do. So.
When they buy it, is, I know it was combined.
And again, in, in some cases, the selectmen have put a contingency that it has to be merged. In some cases, they haven't. But the contingency has always been there that they cannot add additional residential dwellings to it. So it's up, really up to you guys what you wanna do. You can have a contingency in the deed that says, or a restriction in the deed that says it has to be merged. And, you know, answer the offers with a, a letter that says, yep, we've accepted your offer on the contingency that you merged two lots. Or that, and that there's no residential dwelling built on it or whatever. You can, it's, it's town's land, you can put whatever restrictions on it you want.
So I guess we wanna make the most we can on the sale. And we obviously are not gonna accept any more buildings built on it, make a motion, we accept Mr. Perry's offer. Sixty-five, whatever it is.
Sixty-four hundred?
Okay.
Does that sound?
It does, the only thing I, I, so there will be a stipulation, no residents on the property.
No, no additional residential buildings put on the property.
And do we wanna require him to combine lots would be the other question.
I don't know how, whatever we make most tax money from, I don't know how that would work. I don't, as long as we tell him he can't build on it, what else can we do?
Right, that's, that's, it's, usually that's why a lot of times the selectman will say, well, you know, it's up to you, what you, whether you wanna combine or not.
Okay, yeah, let's do it that way.
Okay.
I think that makes the most sense.
That makes.
Yeah, and I agree with Ken, whatever makes the town the most money makes perfect sense.
One on favor, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so. I guess that brings us to the fund of the budget. This is the fund file. This is what you all came to me for. Uh, I've included, uh, you working off this one or?
He said you get two.
So you should have the budget, you should have a wage package, and you should have a, a wage, uh, comparison. The wage comparison isn't fully complete, that was the most information I could get. The town of New Hampton is without a town administrator. And they're backed up a lot of stuff, so they couldn't get back to me right away. So, um, and just, we'll talk about the wage comparison right now. For the towns that I used as far as a comparison, or in some instances, some people call it the universe of comparisons. I looked at population, operating budget, and median income. So those are similar towns to us. Obviously, it's hard to compare apples to apples. The town of Webster contracts out their highway department, so they don't have a, a budget. They have over all amount of money they, they spend on the highway, but they don't have highway department employees.
Who was that again?
Webster.
Webster.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And some departments, some towns have strictly volunteer fire departments, some have, um, STIPs. So that's, you know, there's some, again, it's not, not, not a real apples to apples, but it's about as close as we can get. And I tried to stay in the central New Hampshire area. Uh, you know, obviously, I went a little bit out, but, but in order to find, find some different towns, so. And I think that more or less shows that we're more, we're, we're kinda in the middle, I guess, is what, what I would say.
I guess my question would be, are these same towns, do you know, having the same issues, we are finding help?
Yeah, yeah, that's, every, every town that I talk to, they're more or less in the same boat as we are, it's the same thing. There are some things here, um, operating, I tried to get the latest operating budgets. Chichester is two thousand twenty-two, this is like the twenty-three budget. And I think Webster is the same thing, that's the twenty-two operating line. And then, um, and then I had some proposed stuff in there. The Chichester Town Administrator, um, the proposed wage line, that was a proposed wage for two thousand twenty-two. And I talked to the town administrator, and they said, yeah, how was what they were getting in twenty-three, so. Yeah, again, you can see it's, you kinda have to look at the positions, the hours, who's full-time, who's part-time, things like that, and, and, um, some have hourly wages, some have salary. So some people are full-time. You can see the Dunbarton Police Chief is a full-time position, and obviously, that comes with benefits. So that's, that's something else. So anyway, it's one of those things I, I, you know, wanted to give you guys when we're talking about wages later on in the budget. And certainly, you know, this is, this is your first look at the wages and the budget. But it's something we, we have to really kinda sink our teeth into it into the next month or so.
Yeah.
The next one, if you wanna look at, um, the wage, speaking of wages, we'll stay with that. Let's see. Let me go to the next one. So the wage proposal is what I, what I gave you guys. The Consumer Price Index, uh, right now is running around three point seven percent. So I just put a four, four percentage increase across the board for everybody. And you can see in the two thousand twenty-four column what that amounts to for salaries and, and hourly rates. And then down at the bottom is the library, which already presented theirs, and those are eight percent increases, so. Again, that's, this is, uh, you can see where we went last year from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-three, and then some of them, there's twenty-one wages in there.
So what do we do, make suggestions on things to look at?
Well, again, this is, this is your first look. If you're very uncomfortable with one of these, then this is the time to talk, talk about it. And, and then we'll, we're gonna hammer it out here in the next couple of months. But, but again, this is your first look, and if you're, if you, you know, feel that these numbers are way offline somewhere, then that's, we should talk about it now so I can work on, work on making some changes. If, if this is within the realm of what you think is reasonable, then, then let's, let's keep working on it, and we'll see how things go.
Ken, I know there's been some discussion about, and, and I'm not quite sure whether it's a full-time or, or part-time position.
It's forty-one ninety-one.
Okay, for planning.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I was gonna get to that later on, but.
When, when we get there.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't list that here under the wages, I just, I figured, well, I wanted to.
Yeah.
Let's get through these really, these are the easiest ones right now, we'll kinda look at. And then we'll go down through, where you can see the whole budget, then it kinda gives you a little more idea of what, what we're actually gonna be spending in the operating lines, so.
Geez, maybe I should run for that. Fifteen-six, I could be selecting at the same time, throw that in on the side.
I just noticed the big increase with the library again, and I was wondering in comparison to other towns, are size.
I don't know, I didn't do, I didn't do the library, I know they did theirs, um, last year.
Yeah.
And, um.
It was gonna jump last year, and then.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we were told that it was gonna be.
I'll drag you to the next one of those, I'll hover set another one off so we can go enjoy our.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we, we should, I think.
Really?
Yeah, I'm serious.
You're gonna be there this time.
Hopefully.
I hope so too.
But, um.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was interesting, you know, it really was, because as I understand it, our input into the library budget is none.
None.
None, but, but we can.
Uh, other than.
We can control.
You can, you can choose to reduce the, the bottom line.
Yes.
Your, your authority extends only to that bottom line.
Okay.
You can reduce the bottom line and go to town meeting and say, we reduced the bottom line by this much because of this, and then it's up to the voters at the town meeting to decide what they wanna do.
Okay.
I think if we do that, we'd be dead no water.
Well, I, I just don't like feeling like we're being thanked.
I don't care for that either, but.
And, and that, I think that was the discussion last, last year's budget meeting, yeah.
I remember, yeah.
And I think the, the trustees said that they were gonna.
They did, they charged them for it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And they did.
Yeah, I, I, they did include the nine thousand in there, although they trust fund those wages again this year, to be fair.
Well, yeah, but then, then you look at fire, rescue.
Well, that, that's.
Police in, in.
It, it, yes, that is where things get a little tricky.
That, that's what, well, that's made the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, particularly where the library has now two employees on retirement and family healthcare plans, and, um.
Healthcare is without.
Yeah. So, and the healthcare went off, yeah.
Yep.
So. All right, you wanna start on the operating budget, or the, uh, I guess, I'll start with the. Let me start before we get into that real quick. Let me start on the twenty-three budget, where we have, where we are right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Um. Yep, you can, yep, yep, look at either the the budget that I have gave you has the uh, numbers expended as of eleven-one.
Yep.
And the P and L has the same thing, that was what you got.
Yeah.
But just, just, uh, I talked to the the three departments, fire, police, and highway. About what they had left in their budget, because there were some over expenditures in this year's budget on the, particularly on the equipment lines.
Yep.
Um, maintenance lines, and looking at, I went down through what they had left in various areas of their budget. Um, and we did some projections on wages and retirement and things like that. Um, and I asked them to uh, limit their uh, purchases going forward. Um, they have.
Those these then?
What's that?
Is that what these are?
No, no, those, that's revenue offset, and I'll I'll talk about that in a while.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, they need to do a oil change on the grader and a couple of other trucks. So the town, the the highway department's gotta expend two thousand dollars for for oil. Um, they got a couple barrels coming. Um, the fire chief's getting, um. A a a few things that that he desperately needs, so, um. There's a, there's a few things, um, that are gonna be, not gonna be expended there. Um, after going down through everything, I went went back to the operating budget that we have now. And factored in the overages that we have, the over expenses, and then what we have left, and I think we'll be fine. We're not gonna be, the highway department's not gonna give back fifty thousand dollars like they have in years past, but, um, but that's. That's just the way it is.
Yep, and we all get one.
Yeah.
Can you light me on forty-two twenty? Uh, the forty-two twenty point seven zero subcontractor, what is that?
That's the fire department?
Yep.
So, that's the same as the police department subcontractor line, uh, when they go out to do details.
Oh.
Like they went to the racetrack.
Yep.
This year, and.
Oh, okay, and they also got reimbursed.
So, and they got reemb, they got paid directly by the racetrack. But we have to account for those funds expended, because everybody gets a payroll check. So that's, that money is, they're not tax dollars.
Right.
It shows up as tax dollars, but it really is not tax dollars.
Okay.
Because we get, we get money in, and and then we pay the.
Close back out.
Oh, okay, all right.
Makes sense.
Yep, all right.
Yep. All right, so that's the twenty-three budget, so I think we're looking pretty decent there. And moving on to the twenty-four budget, and I'll start with the with this cover sheet, the cover sheet that you have there. This one here, that just kinda gives the highlights. Um, wages, again, up three point seven, I have an increase by four percent with a question mark. Um, and I just included some, some. Items in there that show you how much of the operating budget is consisted, uh, by wages. Um, and that's including an OT. Uh, so you can see that the wage lines, if you add all the wage lines together, including uh, overtime. It's about thirty-two percent of the operating budget. If you add, that's without the library. If you add the library, it's about thirty-six of the operating budget, thirty-six percent. If you did a four percent increase, uh, across the boards, that's what the wage line would look at. Again, it's about thirty-two percent of the operating budget. And if you added the, that's without the library, but if you add the library in, it's the same thing, it's about thirty-six percent of the operating budget. Um, that does not include the weekend coverage of a volunteer reimbursement, which is thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, our insurance is up fifteen point six percent. The employee contribution is twenty percent of the cost of the plan. Um, and we offer five thousand dollars to nonparticipation for eligible people. Um, if you start on the lines going down on the operating lines, some of the big ones are some of the ones that have gone up quite a bit. Um, election wages are up four thousand dollars because there's four elections this year. Um, the next one, voting machine, um, we couldn't buy one in two thousand twenty-three, but I got a note from Sam today. Uh, when I came into the office this afternoon, that said that they will be available, and we can buy one.
Hmm.
So, that that line will probably go back down.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. So we shouldn't have to worry about that. Um, I have the treasurer, um, salary, that's typically you guys set that. And that's up to you, uh, whether you wanna do it across the board with him, too. Um. You can see I put Medicare, Social Security, unemployment, those are placeholder numbers only. We don't. We won't know what those are until we know what the wages are.
Yep.
Um, the planning board secretary wages are down because we're considering a land use professional employee. Um, at fifteen hours per week, at twenty dollars an hour, which comes out to fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. Um, that's something the planning board and Mandy and the ZBA, we've all been talking about.
Yep.
Um. We would reduce the planning board secretary wages because they would not be doing, and probably the ZBA, uh, secretary wages. Because they would not be doing all of the abiding notices, the posting of the meetings, that would be the slant use protection, that would handle all of all of that. The secretaries would do, they would be recording secretaries, and so they'd be recording the meetings and then minutes, that's. So their their hourly. Uh, rate would stay the same, but their hours would be reduced, so, um, that would be part of that. And you can see I added in, if you go to the budget, um, you can see I added that in to the planning board's budget.
You got forty-one ninety-one point two?
Yeah, it's forty-one ninety-one point sixteen, uh, and at the the next line down is land use professional. And I put sixteen thousand dollars in there. I think that's, that is including yours, is it the very last line on the planning board, forty-one ninety-one?
Oh, yeah, land use year, right, land use professional, yeah.
Oh, no. Oh, okay, yep, okay.
So it shows a seventy-one percent increase in that budget. It's a thirteen thousand dollar increase in that, that total planning board line, which includes the ZBA. But we would reduce the, we would reduce the secretary wages for the planning board, and most likely the. Secretary wages for the ZBA would reduce, too.
Yeah.
I was, I gotta talk to Lisa about hours and figure out what we can, what we can do for that. Again, that's a hit or miss, because those are just, those aren't regular meetings, that's just by appointment only, so we don't, we really don't know. Um, but. Um. The fire department, um, if you go down to the fire department line, the EMT.
Number?
It's forty-two twenty. Under EMT wages. Um, our full-time firefighter has, uh. Has more or less let the chief know that he is planning on retiring sometime in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the chief is trying to figure out what to do. He has a, uh, person that's on the fire department now in Canterbury that is a retired full-time firefighter, still works in the EMS. Down in Manchester, that is interested in in working as a per diem firefighter. Um, picking up twenty-six hours a week, three shifts. And, um, so I show the cost there in that line. And then the other two shifts would be picked up by other per diem firefighters that. I'm not sure if, I just put the same rate, cuz I wasn't sure what the chief would pay for per diem for others that might not be as qualified. Um, so you can see what the the total for that is, it's more than what the salary is for the line right now. But the current, if you take that salary line, you add benefits to it, it it equals ninety-seven thousand dollars for a full-time. The full-time firefighter we have now, and we we'd only be paying sixty-eight thousand. So there'd be, cuz there'd be no benefits, retirement, anything, any of that, healthcare. So it would be a cost savings, and the chief is is confident that he could fill those shifts. Um, if you think that that's a a plan that the town could work with, then he'd like to know, because he'd like to move forward with it. Uh, if you think we should advertise and try and hire somebody to replace that one firefighter, he'd like to know that, and. He would move forward with that, so.
Just come on, your expertise?
I think it's a good plan.
Yeah, I, I do, too.
I reckon that he would move forward with it, and it will save the town money.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Okay.
We like his plan.
Okay, all right.
He's made with the plan.
Yep.
I will let him know. Um, moving on to the next page, the highway department. Uh, you can see with the equipment repairs, the total equipment repairs are up about fifteen point eight percent. Uh, yep, sorry, this line.
Line.
Uh, if you look at the subtotal, equipment repairs, line forty-three eleven point three. And then right below that is the equip, it's the, it's the subtotal, and that's the, all the equipment repairs. You can see it's up eighty-seven hundred dollars, um, he bumped up. He bumped up T-three repairs, he bumped up, uh, the freight liner, the T-seven. And the Ford, uh, that Ford F-150, that's the, that's the old one. That that's gonna be changed to the new, uh, or to the five fifty that we have now, with the new five fifty. He has a thousand dollars in it, only because, uh, or two thousand dollars in it, only because, um. We're having a plow and a sander and everything put on it, and that may incur some costs for maintenance or whatever.
What's the, um, center go for these days?
Well, the the truck that we bought.
Yep.
Uh, was a hundred and. Well, we we appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand for it, and I think, I have to look back to see what we spent. Um, let me see, let me see what we have here. It might be, I think I have that in the.
I think the number's way more than I think it's gonna be.
Highway truck, we've spent sixty-nine thousand dollars, we've spent sixty-nine thousand dollars for the truck. So the other eighty thousand is for the plow, sander.
Yep.
It's a new sander, stainless steel sander, and body.
Yeah.
And it is, we dropped the truck off at HB Fairfield's in August. And I talked to John the other day, and they said they hope to get it in in the next sixty days to work on it. It's been there six months.
Yeah.
And can they not get parts for it, or they just?
No, no, they're just too busy. They just don't, they don't have enough help, and they got too much work, and. Um, last year, we went, the last truck, two years ago, three years ago, the last truck, we went down to Donovan Springs and had the work done. Cuz we thought we'd try them out, and it was, took longer.
Hmm.
And they didn't do as good a job. We had problems with the plow lights and the.
Yeah.
And the controls and a whole bunch of other things, so.
Yep.
Um, anyway.
Can I ask, I forgot to ask you, when we got to the land use planner.
Mm-hmm.
Is that amount of money gonna hire somebody, or are we gonna have trouble filling that position too?
I don't know. I don't know.
Tell me now.
I don't know, I don't know.
That's a really good question.
It is a good question, and I I put that wage in there as a starting place.
Yeah.
Because that's kinda where we start our administrative health, and I just, I'm not sure, I don't know. And it's not like we're looking with somebody, for somebody with a a degree in planning or anything like that.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get somebody that's interested, that's, uh. Um, interested in learning, and and, you know, it's not, it's not a technically challenging position as it stands. But, um, we would hope that that somebody would come in and and start off and and do the, a lot of the legwork. And there are, there's a lot to learn. Um, and Lois is really good at what she does.
Yeah, she's.
As as our, the previous Lori was before her.
No, no, we don't.
So, you know, it's, but it it's a time-consuming position, so. Um, moving down, we're waiting for an estimate for paving that includes the center, the library, and the sidewalk. And then John has a couple of the roads that he wants to do, but he wanted to wait, tell you that, uh, estimates for for these first. Um, see, I wrote dirt roads, and didn't know what you wanted to do, if you wanted to follow through with that. Use some of the opera money for that, or what you wanted to do, what you planned for.
So when thinking this thing over, and how it might structure into our existing department, I've sort of tossed back and forth the idea of hiring it outside?
Yeah, and that's why I put hire contractor for work with a question mark. And I talked to John today about it, and he, there's no way that they could do that work. They just don't have their, the staffing or the time.
Yeah.
So that would be the, that would be what we have to do.
You know who I keep thinking about, I don't know if you do it or not, is Art Rose. Give Art the first road he gets done.
Yeah, I, I think on a, something like this, you'd probably have to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Right, but I just see him as sort of overseer.
Something as, a project of this size, I think you'd, you'd wanna go out to bid.
Yeah.
And and I think you need a, um. You'd almost wanna have an engineer write a.
I agree. There's, I mean, you look at the Borough Road coming down here, it's a mess, and I don't, I don't know what we're gonna.
And that would, and that would, an engineer would would cost some money to hire to to.
Yeah.
Come up with a plan, but I think that would be, to me, that would be the best way to do it, and then then bid it out. Um, and and, and I, and again, I talked to John, and that's what he said, it just, it's it's certainly over their capabilities.
Yeah.
I mean, they could do it over over three or four years, but but not to do it in one year, even two years, they could.
I I see a couple of years. I I don't know what these guys would do. They wanna come in and bang it out in one summer, or do they wanna?
That's on the company.
Yeah.
I mean, you might get a big company like Pike or something like that in the air, and they decide, yep, you know, one of the big pavement companies, they go, yeah, we get. You know, we got three road graders and a fleet of triaxles, and we'll get it done in a month. I mean, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a big chunk of money, and it's a sizable project, so I'm not sure what what, how that would work out.
Yeah. It it feels like we need somebody in Canterbury looking for our interest, at least all the projects I've worked on this. I easily stick my puny hand up, hope nobody notices it.
Hmm.
They don't ever seem to.
Um, we do have to, in in two thousand twenty-four, we do have to. Uh, um, designate a spot for that money.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have to spend it by two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
I'll have to.
So that'll give us three years.
Two years, two years.
Two years.
Two years.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Two years.
Yep. Uh, moving on down to the transfer station, you can see the wages are up forty-two percent, and that is because we now have a full staff.
Yep.
And we've increased the hours to twenty hours per week, so it's actually sixty hours of staff time per week for the field.
Yeah.
Um, the co-op fees are up from eighty-five to ninety a ton. The average, we average about forty-five tons a month. Um, and we get about, we have an offset to that from shaver. The past two years has been about twelve thousand dollars, so. Um, we'll, and we'll increase their costs to match the the, uh, labor raise cost.
Yep.
Uh, we bumped up direct assistance up four thousand dollars. Um, you'll see in the, in the current. Um, you'll see in the, in the current, uh, actual expenses, we've over expended by quite a bit. And, um, we figured we better bump that up in case we have similar cases this coming year.
Not for?
Yeah, that was my concern when I saw that.
I don't know.
That's hard to predict, yeah.
That's a, hook of the coin.
Yes, it is.
We went for years without ever spending hardly anything out of that budget. And this year we have, we have, uh, over expended it quite a bit.
Yeah, how much?
What's the number?
We have, to this year to date, we spent ninety five hundred dollars. In a budget of four thousand, oh. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, oh, it's, uh.
Forty four.
Forty four.
Forty two.
Forty four, forty two point one is the budget line. So we doubled it and it's still less than we already spent this year, but I think that's a place to start from.
Yep.
Okay.
And then moving down, again, the library wages are up eight percent, but the trustees are funding nine thousand dollars.
Yep.
Their overall budget is up sixteen percent. The overall. Operating budget at this point is up two point eight percent. Which is, I think is not bad considering some things we're trying to do. And again, those have, there's some placeholder numbers in there for workers comp liability. The, the social security and those, but, but, but that's, you know. It's not, those aren't, those, the changes there aren't gonna make, should make a huge difference. And then we move down to warrant articles. So the back home, uh, we signed the non binding lease. And that's a hundred and ninety seven. Nine fifty with the trade in. And we have a cap reserve of forty one thousand. So on a five year lease plan, it puts a set of ballpark of around thirty two thousand. I sent an email to the, uh, company today and asked them for a, a schedule of payments. So we could have something more concrete for the budget committee. Grader. Uh, we're looking at four hundred thousand dollars. And with the cap reserve and the trade in, we should have enough money to purchase that outright. And again, we're only one breakdown part that's not available from that being a, a motor.
So I think we should, just opinion, I think we should be looking at cat for sure on that.
And that's what, that's what we did, we talked with them.
They've been around forever and.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't believe they do this.
How far out is the delivery time?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm, my guess is.
We did talk about that.
I think he said, I think he said anywhere from. Six to nine months on the short side.
Yep.
And a year on the long side. Depending on orders.
Let's hope it all's together.
Well, that's a thing.
Get my road done next.
Well, that's, I talked to the fire chief today and he said, the budget for engine three, he doesn't plan on spending any money on engine three. Unless he has to do something to get it inspected. And that's pretty much it.
How old is that truck?
Twenty.
Twenty seven, I think.
Yeah, twenty six, twenty seven years, yeah.
Whose truck was that, Dale's?
Dale's, yeah, that was the old one, the old one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be twenty six or twenty seven years, cause I think it was the, my first town meeting when I moved into town that they were talking about, they brought it up.
Yeah, that's a.
Probably got it for a lot less than two hundred thousand.
Six or seven.
Yeah.
Was it?
Um, Sam would like to buy a folder inserter for his tax bills, he's been, he's been, uh, going to.
Sanm.
Sanm.
Sanm. And they've been letting him use the folder inserter for all his tax bills. And he has some money in his budget right this year that he thinks he can spend on it. If not, there's a lease program for next year, he wouldn't ask for the full five thousand, but he would lease it. And that would be, I don't know, a three year lease or something like that, so.
I, I talked to him today.
If he's got the money, I think he should just go ahead and buy it.
And it would benefit the office too, because if you guys had a big.
Right.
You can put in the report though, we discussed it. Dot, 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 question mark, question mark or something.
But, uh, no, I, I think he, now, is that taking into consideration, was the voting machine a line item in itself?
Yeah, yeah, the voting machine itself was a line item.
Yeah, okay.
That was seven thousand dollars in there.
Alright, good, alright.
Yeah, but he has money other than that, that's, without that, seven thousand dollars.
He should, he should get it, right?
And then there's a, uh, the historical society would like to, there's a mini split in there now, it hasn't worked for four or five years. They'd like to get it replaced, Sam got some estimates and it's around eight thousand dollars, so.
Yes.
And I see gutters, gutters for the meeting house.
And the gutters for, for this building here, we have, we have a couple of bids right around four thousand dollar mark.
Is that gonna include someplace for the water to go or just putting them on and?
Well, that's gutters and down squats, it depends on where you want the water to go.
I think we're gonna have to take it over at least the parking lot.
I think that would be, we'd have to go.
Run down Old Tote Road again?
I don't know.
Probably.
I don't know how.
And free?
I'm not sure how to get it there though, because I think we have to look at the grade and see, figure out what to do.
We might be able to take it around the backside of the library, but I don't know how much piss service there.
Cause we always have a problem every year with the water, the store.
Septic is.
Septic's across the, across the park.
Over, yeah, where the vent is.
Yeah, but there's a septic tank, propane tank right out in front of this building. The septic tank serves both the library and this building.
Yep.
And so there's a propane tank.
Yep.
And then there's a pump, pump station that pumps it across and up into the septic tank.
So that'd be difficult.
So I'm not sure what you.
We put the tank in out there and it went boom, right through the surface and the concrete didn't place.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how you.
That's what I'm thinking.
You'd have to. It's not like you could put a pipe on the ground and have it poke out of the parking lot or something like that.
Yeah.
Like put it in a handicap spot. I don't know, I don't know what you do, you'd have to look at it, see, come up with some ideas. And maybe putting it out here might be the best option.
Maybe we could make a pond out there, a holding pond.
Well, you know, that's what I was thinking.
Well, there's, there is quite a swell out there.
There is, yeah.
And it catches a lot of the water that comes down the hill and directs it out, out behind the library. And I know it's full of stone, so. Cause when we had the water break out here, they had to dig into it a little bit and it was full of stone, so. So maybe they could, we could figure out some way to get it out back, yeah.
Now, did, we talked to him about replacing the claps that are gone out here or?
So. The guy that did the roofs is looking at this building and he's gonna give me a price on gutters and the clapboards, so. Uh, we got gutter estimates for a different, a couple of different gutter companies, regular gutter companies. So those are the, those are the, um, highlights. Um, if you look at your budget spreadsheet, if you go over and you can see the shade column over here.
Yep.
Those are, those are revenue offsets. And at the very, on the very first cover sheet, you look and that's the revenue offset of the payback. From, uh, the twenty percent of the, of the budget of, of healthcare.
Yep.
Okay.
Again, those aren't perfect numbers, cause we don't know what, um, what plans are gonna be accessed for healthcare this year or for twenty four. So the, the sign up is, is now coming up in, in November for healthcare for two thousand twenty four. So we'll know, kind of have a better idea of who's signing up for what and those numbers will get solidified.
Yeah.
There's. I think I sent you electronic version of this. Right? I think I sent you electronic version of this, so you, if you open it in, in Excel, if you have Excel. And if you see a little triangle up in the corner of one of the cells and you hover over it. There's a, there's a comment in there that I, that I made. Um, it has my name on it and it, I did it for some wage lines. And let's see, yeah. Like the deputy town clerk's salary, if you hover over that, there's a, there's a little triangle up in the corner. If you hover over, it says sixteen dollars per week at twenty two eighty eight equals nineteen thousand oh thirty six. So that's what the, that's how I figured the wages, I just did a straight. So there's some of those, so if you look at the electronic version, uh, and I would encourage you to do that if possible. There's highlights on there and some little notes in there that, that helped with figuring, um. Where I came, where I got the, the numbers.
Okay.
Was that email from you or from Cal?
I think I can't, I think I, I sent you the, this and the wage package last Thursday.
Yep.
And then Cal sent the, the, um.
Agenda.
Agenda.
Yep, yeah, all set, very good.
So.
Yeah.
I'll do it next Thursday, I need to meet us.
And, and, and I guess. Again, this is the, this is your first look at it, I would encourage you to look at it line by line. And if there's something that jumps out at you that either you think I made a mistake on, which is very possible. Because there's a lot of lines here and it's real easy to miss something. Cal pointed out one that I missed this evening and.
Cool.
Um, if there's, yeah, I, 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 I encourage you guys to give me feedback on that.
Criticize.
Yes, yeah, 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 um. And, and when the time comes to finalize this, um. Please go through it, look at the addition, look at the percentages, look at everything that's been done. And, um, I mean, I, I am not offended at all in, in my, cause we have formulas in here. That sometimes, for whatever reason, all of a sudden, we'll be working with it and all of a sudden a formula changes and we don't know why.
Yeah.
And so it's. We try to, we do the best we can and, but we, I, I certainly welcome all the, all the help that we can get on this, it's, uh, it's a.
Ken, um, one question for me, I, I know usually a fairly large number in our budget is from Pennacook Rescue.
Yeah, so we haven't heard from them yet.
Okay.
I sent an email the other day asking if they have any idea on. On, um, increases and I got a reply that said, yes, there will be one.
Which shouldn't surprise anyone, it's just how big it's gonna be.
I think the biggest number you can imagine in, in Philadelphia.
And they were.
You know, I, I will say.
Yeah, yeah.
We. If we were to try to fund that ourselves, it would be a lot more than what we're paying.
Right, right, just, just to.
Just for the vehicle.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Little old staff.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yep, so, um, yeah, and that's down, that, in this budget, that's changed down under the health, that's in four four one one.
Okay.
Forty four, one one health line.
Got it, yeah.
And we're. We may move some things around and change a few things, so this is a, a living document and.
Yeah.
There will be changes made and as soon as we get numbers, we'll plug them in and I'll try and send you updates and. Hopefully for the budget committee, we'll have some, some more numbers and.
Don't be surprised if Belmont comes up, they've got some.
Well, Belmont, we, they, they went up last year for the first time in.
Yeah.
Ten years. They just never, never went up. And last year they asked and it was not a big jump.
No.
It wasn't considering what, what we get for services, but.
Yeah, so you do sure.
Is that the same like mutual aid that we have with the fire department or?
Fireman?
Is it the same mutual aid type thing where we have with the fire department?
Yeah, yeah, oh, well, other than we, we give them a fee for providing services. The mutual aid compact, we pay the mutual aid compact, but that is for dispatch services and other ancillary. They have a, they have a mutual aid coordinator that if there's a, a major incident. That person comes out and acts, assists with the command and control of, of the fire or the incident or whatever.
Yeah, huge help.
Yes, yeah, big, big help.
I can't say enough of great days.
And, and, and he's a full time employee.
Yeah.
And, um, and again, uh, he comes out to trainings and meetings and assists with a whole bunch of other things, so.
Was that Dick Wright's old position?
That was what Dick Wright did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's his son now, isn't it?
Pardon me? Keith's.
Keith, Keith, yes.
Um.
Yep, I'll think of the last names.
From Henniker, who's the fire chief in Henniker.
Chief in Henniker.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Keith Gower.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
What do you have for?
I've, I've done a lot of talking tonight, I hope you guys, uh.
We really gotta, um.
This is.
Fill the budget.
And this is one, something, I mean, we all, we have to sharpen our pencils and really, you know, look at the numbers. This, I don't see anything in this year's budget that is crazy, but, um. But again, it's one of those things where we, you know, we, this is your budget that you present to the residents. So you have to be ready. You have to be ready to.
We can stand up there with fly swatters, but it's.
I'm gonna push you around in front of me.
I, you know, uh.
Hey, it's my last time, you don't have to do that to me.
Last, we don't get too many times like last year when we.
It was smooth.
Went through the highlights and there was no questions, we don't get that very often, that doesn't happen, that was like. I mean, I remember Bob said, where are you people, what did you do with the residents, I can't believe it's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, usually somebody says, well, what about this?
And they didn't, nothing was questioned.
Uh, yeah, no, no, and I.
Well, but engine, there was some question.
Yeah, 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 some of the warrant articles were questioned, but, but the operating budget as a whole was not questioned, it was shocking.
Twenty fifty dollars, so the rest of our dollars.
Have you heard any more from, um. On the police department, uh, the concept of take home vehicles?
Yes.
Thank you for asking that, I was thinking of.
So. So, uh, you'll see, I mean, if you go through this, you'll see the, the police department has.
I saw, yes.
Like seventy five thousand dollars left, you know, uh, and the chief is, uh, has gotten some prices. Um, and there are vehicles that are available at a dealer down in Massachusetts. They have ten of them and, and they said, just tell us if you want it, want one and we'll get it to you. Um, they're in the forty five, forty six thousand dollar range.
Yeah.
I did find a used one. Uh, actually it was in really good shape, I sent it to him, it was on that Minnesota bid.
Yep.
And it was a place down in Pennsylvania and it was a Ford Expedition. It was a two thousand thirteen, it only had a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. And the last fifty thousand were done by, it had been downgraded from a cruiser to a town staff vehicle. So the last fifty thousand was staff, I don't know, building inspector or whatever, whatever. And, um, man, the thing looked clean, it had a whole bunch of pictures and, um. The reserve was only five thousand dollars on the auction. Now, something like that's gonna go for ten grand easily or twenty grand, whatever, you know. But, but, uh. I, I sent him an email and said, hey, next, next time you're on a trip down to South Carolina to visit your wife, maybe you should stop by Pennsylvania. See if this thing's still there.
See how it looks.
Bring a check with you.
I mean, it looks like in your comparison, we're right in the middle with respect to patrol officers.
We are, we are, yeah, we are, and, and. But there are towns that does, some of the towns are including incentives.
Oh, yeah.
You know, uh.
Sign up.
Sign up bonuses or take home cruisers or, or extra vacation days or whatever and.
Overtime.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, again, it's hard to compare apples to apples, but.
True enough.
But pretty much every municipality you talk to, they're the same. but pretty much every municipality you talk to, they're in the same boat as we are as, as far as trying to find help, so.
And it's no different. State police is still seventy to eighty.
Seventy, yeah, seventy-five, eighty people in our town.
And there's, and there's no guarantees that after the sign-on time is up, that these people are gonna stop.
And that's, right, right. So, so I think the, the most we can do is try to offer a competitive wage.
Yeah.
And if we can find something that doesn't cost the town a lot of money, um, like a cruiser, then that might be the way to go.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. It's, it's one of those things. So I think that needs to be considered, um, with this budget. Before the end of this year, if, I think we have, we have the money that we could afford to buy one and they could have it and we could add, change our ad and, and do it that way. So, um, please keep that in mind. I would think that, that maybe that first meeting with the budget committee, if we, if you guys wanna try and float that by them and see what they think, and if there's tons of pushback, then say, well, I, I guess we're not gonna do it, or if there isn't, then, then call the police chief the next day and say, yeah, call that company and let's, let's see if we can do it.
Yeah.
At the end of the year.
Okay.
And as long as we have an invoice before the end of the year, we can pay for it.
Yeah.
Spend the money in twenty-three and then.
Yeah.
Uh, even if we don't take delivery until twenty-four.
Yeah.
So.
He's gonna throw me in front of him when he talks at town meeting. It's not fair.
You're small work.
Whatever. He'll beat you right there.
Equal me, you'll have a wrestling match.
Well, you know, I think, again, similar to what, similar to last year, if we have a well-prepared budget with, uh, and we do a good job presenting it, I think most people are reasonable and I, you're always gonna have somebody that's gonna say, well, you know, I don't think that's right or whatever, but.
Yeah.
But I think, I think being well-prepared and presenting it well is, is goes a long way to, to helping the cause.
Simple, you know, what if.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Agreed.
This is what it is. This is why this is.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Gonna be our end result.
And at the end of the day, as, as Bob put last year, and we're still in that situation this year, um, we are in a good financial place right now.
Yeah.
Um, we have a hundred and four thousand dollars or so in bond payments. Um, we're gonna have more because of, uh, the fire truck and something else, but, and the backhoe, but those are short-term, five-year, they're not twenty-year bonds for billions of dollars.
Right.
And I think, and the, the, um, we're looking at the, the gold sire being paid off in next year.
Right.
Or two thou- two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, whatever it is.
Yeah.
And then the following year, that, uh, the cruiser and that other bond is paid off. The bridge and cruisers paid off, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and our income from taxes is good. We don't have a lot of delicate taxes. We're at the lowest as far as own taxes we've ever been.
Yeah.
Um, I, again, we're, our, our income to debt ratio is, is very good, very good, so.
So I've got something I'd like to discuss with the board and that is the, whatever it is that's going on between Belmont and Canterbury and the school district.
It's on my list of things to talk about tonight as well, so. Which I don't think surprises anybody in the room, but I'm hearing lots and lots wherever I go, so there's lots of questions and my hope was to try to get some clarification on the process because as I think we've all become aware, there was a new state law that was quietly passed that affects all this.
Right.
So I wasn't aware of that.
So I, we've got two articles. One is talking about, uh, the changes in the law and one of them's talking about, like, it's a newspaper article. And I think I sent Cal two, uh, sites that he put them up on the download quick page for the school issue. You didn't get them?
So I got a mail from you.
I don't have anything from.
You sent it out this afternoon.
This afternoon.
An email from you with a, with a, um.
I understand.
Attachment, school district's law. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
When you sent, you sent it to.
I tried to send it to Cal to see if she could put it out.
Went to.
Everybody on the side room.
Yeah, yeah, it went to Scott, Cheryl and myself. And it's, uh, doesn't list an RSA here, it's just the, the.
Not sure it came through with one Cal. Lenora had sent it to, forwarded it to stuff she's.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, organization, reorganization or withdrawal. Um, it's just the text of the, of the law.
Yeah, I can cut.
I'm not sure what the RSA number is.
Oh, if you go to town. I don't understand.
And basically it, it outlines the, the process.
Yeah.
Um.
Right. Maybe one ninety-four dash C?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And that's.
Section of ours. Yeah, I'm not sure, cause it, it, it talks about one ninety-four, C colon four.
Yeah.
Um, requirements in that, so I'm not sure.
Nothing that's, it's, um.
Okay, so it is one ninety-four, C two.
Yeah.
Is what it is, C colon two.
Okay.
And it references C four, C colon four. Um, but, but that is the, that, that, I don't know when that was passed. I know it was recently.
Yes, it was, it was passed in.
It basically, it reduces the, I think it reduces the, uh, the level of requirements for voters in the district. It gives more strength to the voters in a combined district like ours of a town, of a single town. It used to, I think the, the old laws said you need to treat this, uh, of, of all voters, and this one, it breaks it down into individual towns, I believe.
Yeah, it does.
I just don't want us finding, coming up on December twelfth or whenever the vote from the state is, that we should have sent the board a select an opinion on what's happening because it's gonna affect the town dramatically, I think.
I don't think we can.
Why?
As, as a board, we can have informational, but as an individual you can, but I don't think as a board we can legally.
I don't know. I, I'm not sure why we can't. That's what I'm gonna keep asking because this is gonna affect the character of the town for years to come if this goes through. I mean, it's gonna affect where kids go, it's gonna affect who pays for them. It's gonna affect, uh, relationships and families. If one kid goes to one high school and one goes to another, is that what we wanna set up for our citizens? And if you look at the tax numbers that they suggest are possible to achieve, that's a staggering number.
Yeah, it is. It is, it's, it, from either report, the majority and the minority. Cause the minority was what, three to nine dollars?
Three to nine.
And the other one was.
Fifty cents to a dollar and a half or something of the kind. Was it three?
Yeah, three, and, and even, even a dollar, as far as I'm concerned, it is a lot for people to, for thousands.
Yeah.
Yeah, over and above what they're already paying.
That's right.
Because you're gonna have to reimburse Belmont for any improvements over the, yeah. It's, it's, it's a, a big deal and they, they're meeting what, the twelfth of December, I think.
That's the state.
State, yeah.
School board.
But, um, one of the, uh, Belmont members, Travis O'Hare, is a, a state rep.
Okay.
And he's very knowledgeable. You might wanna reach out and talk to him. He, he did a whole, a whole, uh, outline of the law when we first met. And explain how, how the voting process would work.
So do you have any poll with the man, so he'll stand up and be counted or?
He's on the majority.
Fuck, that's ridiculous.
But he has that, um, all that. He was on the committee for the, I'm, I'm pretty sure for the reps. So he's, he would be somebody if you could contact him. I, I don't know if.
He didn't, obviously didn't live through the seventies when this was turmoil was going on. He wasn't sent to another town to go to school.
No, he's probably forty.
Yes, we didn't even see it.
But, um, it, it's, they did the ten-year study and I, I think all the people that worked on it did put in a lot of time and a lot of thought.
This is Scarponi.
No, this, this, this board that just finished this ten-year study.
Well, they showed which, they reached vastly different conclusions and they had.
They, they have because it, it was a different mix of people. It, it was different in their own feelings. And when they came down, I, I hadn't really read the majority yet because I just got it. The minority, I was on that subject, four of us. And even, even so, you, you gotta go in and just, these are the questions we have to answer, these are the questions we have to address. And put your own feelings way back here and what's gonna be best for your community.
Um, I posted the minutes of the committee and with, and the minority and majority report on the town website.
Very good.
Um, we're gonna put that on the town email, um, just so people have access to it or as a note that says that, uh, those of there, everybody's interested in looking at it, so.
And Sam said the first eleven pages is the actual.
Yes.
Report.
Yes.
Yeah.
For the majority, cause they got like a hundred and ninety-nine pages.
Which are the minutes from all the previous two years of meetings.
Right, right.
Yeah, the appendix is on, they, they included the, the studies from ninety-one and eighty-three.
Yeah, and that's all in there. The majority is like twelve pages.
Yeah, okay, so I'll look at that sort of.
Yeah.
Do we know the process from here now that we're aware of the new state law?
So the process is the same.
Okay.
Um, it, the law only affects the, the vote of the majority.
Majority, yeah.
Of the towns. So the process still remains that the, um, it goes to the Department of Education.
Right.
If, if they, um, if they send back a positive vote, then it goes to a vote of, uh, both, both towns and the school district.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, then that, depending on that vote, if that becomes affirmative, then, then they, the town has, I think it has a year to set up the new school district.
Yeah.
And the accompanying staff and, and all that.
Yeah.
So, um, if the Department of Education denies it, um, it cannot come back up for another two years.
Okay.
So.
So I guess if, it would be the first session when voting took place?
No, it would be in the second session.
Second?
Second.
Well, it would, it would be, the school district would be at the first session because that's a ballot.
Right.
And the second, and the town vote would be at the second session. It would be a warrant article.
Yeah.
Yep.
Bring you by and get some pillows if it gets that far.
Yeah.
It, it.
I, I mean, in, in my, my thoughts, the Department of Education philosophy over the last few years has been school choice.
Right.
They have, they have fostered the, I guess, the program, the voucher program. They don't wanna call it a voucher program, but that's what it is. They have fostered that and encouraged that. And I see this fitting right in with that philosophy.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. I don't know if they'll look at this, the majority and minority part and my guess is they'll, and you know, then they'll come back with a, either a yes or no, so.
And then it's still, if I'm correct, it, it still has got to get past both towns.
It does. After that, then it's a vote of both towns, yeah.
And, and the school, well, the.
Well, and, and the school district vote.
And that's.
And I, my question was, well, what if the school district fails and the towns say yes?
Yeah.
And I gotta, I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't, I, I didn't get an answer on that one either.
I, I don't know. I mean, that's, I'm not, I'm not quite clear.
But I, I, it's.
But that is the process. It goes to the Department of Education, depending on what they say, then, then the process either moves forward or it stops.
So if it moves forward, um, Canterbury votes yes, Belmont votes yes for the withdrawal, then we, the town of Canterbury are obligated to set up a.
Set up a school district.
School district, yeah.
As well, the town of Belmont has to set one up too.
Right, so.
Because the shaker, regional school district goes away.
Right, ceases to exist.
Yeah.
So new school boards.
Yeah.
On our part, superintendent.
Staff.
Staff, right.
And housing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have no housing really at this point that would be suitable.
Unless, unless the school has, the elementary school has an office or something, place that they could use, so.
So I think, I, I think that there should, if this trans, trans, there should be a lot of information readings so that a lot of the disinformation doesn't get out there. That's.
I had asked, uh, Randy if she was gonna do a press release or something, and she said after the reports are sent to the D O E, so I'm waiting for that.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to see which thing the Department of Education does.
Do they have a deadline? Do they have to?
No.
I don't know. I don't know.
We have a deadline.
I would think that they would.
Well, that's why, yeah.
I would, I mean, we have to have a deadline for warrant article, so I would think by the end of the year, they would have to make a decision.
Makes sense to me.
I don't know.
Yeah, there was, yeah, we could show this, end of the year. For some reason, it sticks in the worm.
Yeah.
So. You have anything else?
Not right now, but you'll hear from me again, I'm sure.
Oh, I know, yeah. I, I just hate to, um, I, I hope everybody gets their facts straight.
Okay.
Because this is a very costly, if it goes through.
Yeah, certainly, although if you can, then Belmont.
Well, yeah, and I, I just, the thing that if, okay, say, Ken, did, did, uh, if, okay, say if Canterbury says yes and Belmont says no.
Well, then there's percentages in, in there somewhere and I'm not sure. I'm.
Yeah, I'm not even.
I didn't, I didn't, I, I was busy with the budget, so I really couldn't, couldn't look at that.
So I took a quick read through the new law. It looks like if sixty percent or more of the Belmont voters say no, then it's a no.
Then it's a no.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure of the percentage.
I guess the other question that certainly I, in reading one of the reports, I think the majority report mentioned an amount of money that was due technically if the district's dissolved, there's some money that we owe.
There is. This is a buyout.
Buyout.
We would owe a million something dollars.
Yes.
So we'd have to figure out how to.
Oh, that would be a lot of, so.
Yeah. Good numbers.
Okay.
Insurmountable, but.
It's what?
In, for, to think that Belmont would want to lose.
I don't think they're gonna. I think Canterbury, if they thinks ten minutes about it, they're not gonna either.
Oh, I just.
It looks like a, no, don't go there, Ken.
But it's.
There are people in town that are raising issues that could be solved at the school board level, I'm thinking. And that's how we would have solved it in the old days. I got pictures of Willie Nelson up on his bulldozer building that school up on the hill.
Oh, you too. Now, I don't have per, pictures personally, but there was some in the town office. So, but, we'll have to see what happens to December twelfth, I think.
Yeah. I start to think about contingencies.
I think so too.
And to see what we can do within our perimeter legally.
Is that an attorney question?
Yeah, I think so.
What do you, what do you wanna do?
No, I said if, if, if this does move forward, we'll have to see what they're wondering what the board can do.
Can the select board take a position, essentially?
I would think you could. Um, I, I mean, you're an elected body and if the select board feels strongly about one thing, then they, I don't, I don't think there's, I think if you sent a joint press release or comment or whatever saying that whatever your feelings were, either pro or con, then, then that's certainly reasonable. I mean, our warrant articles have whether you back a warrant article or not, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, your opinion does count, I would hope. Um, as.
That came up tonight. Did you hear it from Jeff? Wanted to know if we would support it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that, I think it means, I think for, for a lot of the voters, if they go to town meeting and it, and it says, the selectmen recommend the article or don't recommend it, it carries some weight.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Because you guys are here at seven o'clock at night on a Monday night talking about it and trying to figure out and looking at the budget and getting all those numbers and.
Yeah.
You're, you're, uh, the ones that, that have all the details.
Right. Yeah.
I just don't see it. I just don't see it forming.
Wish I could believe that. That's what I, if I felt the same way, I wouldn't bother with it, but I've seen some of these go opposite to what I thought they were gonna do.
Yeah. That new law was passing September?
I don't know. I'm gonna make sure everybody gets a copy of it though.
Yeah. Is it, can you tell Cal if, as you looked, was it up to date, the new law? In whatever you looked at? I assume a, a state website?
This website is.
Findlaw or something?
If you go.
It's casetech, casetech dot com.
If you go to, if you go to, uh.
Yeah, it's September.
If you have the, if you have the RSA number.
Just kind of, we started.
If you go to, if you go to Google and just take, here's your RSA, the one ninety-four.
One ninety-seven, I think it was.
Or whatever it was.
Yeah, one ninety-nine.
It should, there should be something from the, the state, there's a state website that gives all the.
Yeah.
All the RSA's, all the current states.
Yeah, that's how I usually find it, but, and a lot of SEO on this, I guess. I'll, I'll find it.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
And I can, I will be putting it in the minutes, a link to the latest RSA.
Sounds good, cause I wanna make sure that.
So you have a minute, could somebody move to adjourn and?
She'll move. That seconded it.